Good evening. Good evening, welcome to the Monday, June 26th, Hazlet Board of Education meeting. First item of business is correspondence. Jeff?
Yes, we have one item, a thank you note from Tom King for the bell that we presented him along with other retirees at the Board Retirement Reception Year. And that's it.
And I've got one piece of correspondence that was at my desk tonight, a letter to the Raya family, a car of Judy Tagreeney at Raya, from the Haas family thanking the staff and everybody at Raya for the wonderful career their daughter Caitlin had at Raya, and thanking them for everything that was done throughout her career there. And now they're looking forward to middle school. I'll get you copies there. Okay, other items from the audience. Does anybody here like to speak to the board on a subject not currently on the agenda? Now is your opportunity. Seeing nobody, we'll move right on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, well, now that school's out, I have a shorter report, but did want to start by congratulating President Brenneman and Bev Levy in that they were re-elected to the Board of Education for another four-year term, and we want to salute them for the fine leadership that they've provided the school district in the past, and we look forward to another four great years with these two individuals, so we appreciate that. And again, congratulations. Also wanted to inform the Board of Education and the community that by the powers invested to me by the Board of Education, I've accepted two professional resignations. One came from Sue Crino, who's been an outstanding educator here in Hazlet. She has worked for fourteen years as a speech and language therapist for us. And Sue, I can tell you, is a real highly regarded teacher, and we're certainly going to miss her, but this resignation was in her best interests, and we certainly wish her much success in the future. And then we unfortunately received another, and this is not in your agenda, but just late last week, we received another resignation from a teacher from Meridian High School, and that's Jerry Chirkwin. And you know by attending the Meridian High School commencement ceremonies, Jerry is one of those real favorites of our students, just an outstanding educator. She has worked in the, at the Meridian High School and the old Hazlet Adult High School for twenty-one years, and Jerry was a social studies teacher. And again, I've accepted her resignation, and certainly we will miss her, and we wish her the best, and she is retiring. Also, on your agenda, and I believe the board has received a pretty thorough report from us, that we have reached a tentative agreement with the Hazlet Education Association, and that agreement is a three-year employment agreement, and we're recommending that the board take action on that issue this evening as part of their action items. Also, wish to congratulate Melanie Whistle. She is one of our recent graduates, a graduate of the class of 2000. We know her as being just an outstanding student and a fine representative of Hazlet High School. At the very end of the year, you know, after we had already recognized students for all their various awards, she received a late award from the Lansing State Journal and Colkins Paint Company, and she was designated for a Good Kids Scholarship. And that is a $1,000 scholarship that Melanie will receive, and it's a highly competitive scholarship. Students from all over the greater mid-Michigan area had an opportunity to apply, compete for this scholarship, and Melanie turned out to be the winner. And I think for that, and the reason she won it is for the tremendous community service that she has provided, not only her high school, but the entire community. Melanie is the one that worked so hard, and that hats off to cancer, remember? We represented that with that at one point in the year, and just so many other things that she's been involved in, just an outstanding student. And I'd like to thank Mrs. McCaffrey, our high school librarian, for giving Melanie an opportunity to compete for that scholarship, and that she nominated her for that award. So, we congratulate Melanie for that great distinction. And also, perhaps you've already read it in the paper, but the fifth grade and eighth grade MEEP scores are out. For whatever reason, the Lansing Journal didn't do their regular complete survey of all the mid-Michigan schools. So Sharon is passing out a brief summary that she's put together to reflect our MEEP scores. I think they're, they're very good. Of course, there's always room for improvement, but when you compare our Hazlet scores with that of the state's scores, we far exceed that. So maybe you could briefly go over this report, Sharon?
Yeah, apologize for the handwriting. As you can see, we are significantly above the state as we usually are in social studies, writing, and science at grade eight, almost a twenty-point increase above the state in all those areas. We also improved in all areas at the middle school in grade eight with a gain of 1.9 in social studies, 5.3 in writing, and 10.8 in science. We're really pleased to see those science scores take a nice big jump. In grade five, we also did significantly better than the state across the board. Earlier this year, you remember, we did a little comparison between Raya and Murphy, and we had some concerns about the fifth grade at Raya, but they have really shown brightly this year. They have improved significantly in all areas, and they are slightly lower than Murphy, but, but not anything we need to worry about. So we were extremely pleased to see our fifth and eighth grade scores.
And then lastly, not on your agenda, we have a special guest with us this evening. I really should call to call Margaret Holschlag a guest, in that she's worked in our district for so many years, but she has been away this past year, as you know, as Michigan's Teacher of the Year. And we invited Margaret to come in tonight and just kind of reflect on the really grand year I think she's enjoyed. So, welcome back, Margaret.
Hey, thanks Bob. Yeah, I hope I never left. Yikes. Thanks for inviting me tonight, I appreciate this. First, I really appreciate the opportunity to say hello to all of you, and thank you all for all of your support. As this year has gone on, in addition to fulfilling the role as Michigan Teacher of the Year, because of the support and the encouragement that I've gotten from the Board of Education here, I've always felt that I'm a Hazlet teacher first, so thank you very much. Another thank you though, too, also to Bob Regan and to Sharon Jones. Now, these two, you know, you guys have really been my mentors this year as the year has gone on. Bob, you challenged me in the beginning of the year to think beyond the classroom and beyond the district, and you've continued as the year has gone on to help me set those horizons further and further, and I've really appreciated that. It's a very valuable guidance to me, thank you.
Thank you.
And Sharon and I have met regularly as the year has gone on to talk about all kinds of stuff, professional development and curriculum and stuff, and standards, and Sharon, every time we meet, I always learn something new in those conversations, so thank you.
You're welcome.
The other thing is too, I've really appreciated being able to write a little bit in the blackboard each time, too. It's given me the opportunity to stay connected to the Hazlet community, so this has really been fun for me to do. I get a lot of feedback from our community on this, too. This is the first year that the State Board of Education and the Michigan Department of Education have had the Teacher of the Year away from the classroom, with priorities being to promote quality teaching through initiatives, and being a spokesperson for the teaching profession, and assisting in the design of the Teacher of the Year program. And so it's been a working position for me, and I've been able to initiate programs that increase student achievement and change the way that teachers teach. It's a, it's a win-win situation, though, because I've been able to share my experiences of my career here in Hazlet. I've been able to share that all over the state, but I've also been learning things about best teaching practices to bring back to Hazlet when, when I return. One of my actions for promoting quality teaching has been the Big History Lesson, and I know that you're familiar with this model, but just to review a few of its key components, it's ongoing sustained professional development for teachers. Those teachers who are part of it are part of a learning community for the whole year. And the week that they spend at the museum is a catalyst for a year-long thematic study. It's a week that's teacher-led and it's student-centered. It's the kind of week in which it's the teacher doing the design for the lesson that fits their group of students and fits the curriculum and fits with what our state standards are as well. The last component of that is the teachers and the students get to take time, and they take time for reading and for talking with each other, and cooperative research for sketching. It's a, it's a kind of a little treasure that our kids get to do, is to take time to ponder stuff, to uncover history rather than just trying to cover a curriculum. With that, too, we've been, the, a group of us have been working on a production of an instructional video for the Big History Lesson. And another big, huge thanks to Ingham ISD, Kathy Duesbury-White, and John Zink have been working with me for countless hours on that. So, when that is produced? By the end of this week. Woo-hoo. I'll make sure you get copies of them.
Thank you.
The museum, as you know, wants to continue the expansion of the program, and again, thank you to all of you for allowing that to happen. It's the kind of expansion that's going to go from eight teachers from this year to twenty-eight for next year, and continuing that kind of professional development of having the possibilities for teachers about how to use community resources as part of their curriculum. So, thank you very much. In the role of Teacher of the Year also, I have, I've heard and seen the power of the collective voice, and that's been one thread that's gone through the whole year for me. It's been the collective voice of all of the Teachers of the Year when we met in Dallas in January, and when we met in Washington in May, to meet the president and to talk with each other. We had a town meeting with Secretary of Education Richard Riley, and ceremony in the Rose Garden at the White House. And best of all, were the conversations among all of those teachers. It's a very dynamic group, and I just can't wait to see them again, which is actually Space Camp in another few weeks, and then National Teacher Forum in October, so we have a few chances to get together again. It was the collective voice of Michigan teachers, though, that really helped me a few weeks ago. I had a chance to talk to the Merit Award Board, and to talk to them about the MEEP and standards and merit awards. I sent out a message to the Michigan Teacher Forum requesting their opinions about this. I was a little daunted by their request to speak to them, because, you know, there's eighty-seven thousand teachers in Michigan, and I wanted to be sure to represent them well. Well, I got a huge response from teachers, and it was interesting when I presented to the board, too, because they were as interested in these future conversations with teachers as they were for the information that we were talking about then, about standards. So, the Michigan Teacher Forum has been extremely helpful to me as this year has gone on. I was determined in the beginning of this year to say yes to everything that I could, even if I wasn't quite ready, which happened, but that's okay. We can learn as we go, right? And one particular group that I've really enjoyed saying yes to and speaking to are teacher education groups at lots of universities throughout our state to be able to talk to them. It's given me an opportunity to showcase what teachers are doing for best teaching and learning practice, and also to, to help close the gap a little bit on what, what's going on just on a more theoretical end at the college level to what's really going on in the classroom, the really heart and soul of what's going on in the classrooms. It's been very apparent to me that our new teachers and our soon-to-be teaching group needs to hear excitement of teaching from all of us, whether we've been in the field for a long time or, or not. They need to hear that excitement. The other group that I've really enjoyed saying yes to are the civic groups that I've talked with, and that's been many as well. The speaking engagements as the year has gone on, I've been, oh, about, generally about two each week, sometimes more, a lot of writing this year and that kind of stuff. But the civic groups in particular, I've been very impressed with their eagerness to get connected with the schools. A very common question among civic groups is, what can we do to help? What's our connection with the schools? And that's been, that's been a very rewarding thing for me, to be able to talk to groups about that. I've also found, too, that there's a fair amount of misinformation going on about what's going on in our schools, as if our schools are doing fine, but it's those other schools that still need a lot of help. And so to talk to civic groups, to showcase again what's the, the good news that are going on in the schools, it's been a pleasure to do that. And I've had a lot of chances to talk about Hazlet in that context, too, believe me. The public really does want to know about our best efforts and those, those success stories that are going on. Well, this last season of the school year, too, it's, it's felt really kind of like a snowball. It just keeps getting bigger and bigger. So I'm excited about next year to continue the work that I've done with professional development and with curriculum work, and I really look forward to the year 2001, too, when I come back to Hazlet. So, thank you, I appreciate being able to speak to you, Tom.
Maybe some questions? What was it like to be in the White House with the president, and that you were in the Rose Garden, is that right?
We were.
Okay. Oval Office?
Yes.
The picture's in the Oval Office, right?
Mm-hmm. It was a thriller. It was, it really was. They picked us up at our hotel in a bus, so imagine a school bus packed with about fifty teachers who are all a bunch of yayas. We were a dynamic group, talking all the time about all kinds of stuff, a lot of education stuff, but it was, there was this wonderful group dynamics going on. And they, they had us first in the Roosevelt Room, and we were all standing around in a circle alphabetically according to our state, you know, Maryland, Massachusetts, Michigan, Minnesota. And we all looked around the room before each of us went into the, to the Oval Office to shake the hands with the president and Secretary of Education Richard Riley. And it, that was probably the moment that I'll hold most dear in my heart, because these were all people that had become friends, and we were all so excited to be Americans, and so honored to be teachers. It was, it was really a thrill.
That's great.
Anything else? Well, Margaret, you have represented Hazlet very well, and you've certainly represented your profession very well this last year.
Thank you, Sharon.
And we certainly know that next year, you're going to be touching the lives of hundreds and hundreds of kids, which is more than you can touch here in Hazlet, so your next year will be very rewarding, I'm sure. And then, we want you back.
Yeah.
So, don't forget, you're still one, and throughout the year, please, please stop in, keep your connection.
Absolutely.
But thank you, it's been a great year.
Thank you so much.
Good job, Margaret.
Thank you.
And that's my report.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Discussion items, we have one item, curriculum and textbook adoption, and I'll turn it over to Sharon Jones.
It seems appropriate that it's the last meeting of the school year, and we would be talking about courses for next year and some new textbooks. We have some invited guests to help us do that. First of all, Amy Fenton, who is a music teacher at the high school, is going to be talking about a new course that we are going to offer, entitled Music Appreciation. And then, following Amy, Gail Hicks, who is the department chair for math, will talk about, well, she shares that responsibility with Helen Shipley, but she'll be talking about two new courses at the high school and some textbooks that we would like to purchase. And then, following Gail, Valde Galides, who is the administrative department chair for science, will be discussing some new science texts. And he will also, as his role of middle school principal, be sharing a little bit about a new careers curriculum at the middle school. So we'll start with Amy.
I'd just like to talk a little bit about the thought in planning this class. Basically, at the high school, and actually at the middle school, the only general music class given is in sixth grade, so the last chance students have in the district to, you know, non-performance music class at this point is in sixth grade. So we came up with an idea to put that into the high school, so that the students would be exposed to music and learn a lot more about music without having to perform, because we have quite a few students out there that are still interested in, would like to participate in music programs, but would not be quite so interested in performance, so they wouldn't be the students that would join choir or band per se, although it would be open to those students also. I have put together a list of topics that I would like to cover in the class. I haven't spent a great deal of time yet planning, but I'm sure I will be spending quite a bit of time this summer. I'd like to pass those out to you and a couple of music magazines that are around there for the high school kids.
Hey, listen, they're all very cool.
Yeah. And answer any questions you have. It would be a separate class, first semester from the second semester class, and I'd like to use the format in thematic units, and do a little bit of emphasis in, with an internet component also, with research. I, I thought that it might be nice to do a nice history of jazz component and include blues in with that. Also musical theater, which would include a field trip to probably Wartens Center to see a musical when they're in town. Study a composers of the month, choose a different composer each, different music from around the world, a little multicultural experience. Fit about history of rock and roll, so kids can understand what they're listening to and where it came from. And another important thing might be acoustics, a little bit of a science component there. And then, depending on the kids in the class, we might be able to do a little bit of a guitar component, a keyboard component, depending on what type of equipment the kids could bring with them. And I've attached a few articles on internet and TV shows that are out there that we can use as resources, and a few lesson plans next year.
Amy, how many people have registered? I think it's on, the kids had an opportunity to register.
Last I checked, there were, let me think, the last class list I had had twenty-four kids in it. Since then, I think they've separated it to two semesters, and there are fourteen plus in each. I'm not sure what the count is at this point. I did stop by last week, but we had a hard time getting into the system.
I know. I know we had a number of parents who talked with us early in the year.
Yes.
Some people who have some special needs kids, and they really encouraged the district to look at this and see if it was possible, so we're real pleased that we were able to accommodate parents and students.
That was great.
The, the twenty-eight or so students that have signed up so far, how many of them, do you know how many of them are currently in band and choir?
There are three that I know of that were signed up from the choir program.
Okay.
Band, I'm not positive, but I went through it with Adrian, and he didn't recognize any names of band kids in it either.
Are you giving preference to the non-performing students?
No preference given at this point, it's just open to all students.
Is, is there any theory or general music theory that's covered in this?
I'd like that to be somewhat of a component, a little bit through just musical elements with form, rhythm, beat, melody, harmony, timbre, but unless I get a class of students who've been involved in, say, choir or band and have some reading skills, it would be difficult to go very in-depth with music theory. But that would be something I'd like to do in the future.
Sharon? I guess, speaking from the side of the world, I, although I was in band when I was in high school, not really being somebody who could perform real well in that regard, I'm delighted to see the class. I think it's for both, for both music and for art, I think there's a segment of the kids that would, that would do well learning about it instead of just participating in it, because some of them can't, some of them just don't basically have the talent. So I'm really delighted to see it, because I think this gives some kids an opportunity that might not otherwise even be involved in something like this, or really have an appreciation for a lot of the things you're going to cover. So, basically, I'm thrilled.
I think it'll teach kids a little bit about different music that they don't normally listen to.
Yeah, just expose them. Explain it to them also, maybe they'd appreciate it.
Exactly, and that way they'll, they'll enjoy it in the future.
Is this middle school or is this freshman?
This is high school.
High school freshman? Only or any?
No, it's going to the entire high school, ninth through twelve.
Okay. All right. I think it's a great class.
Amy, how do you see the assessment of this? What, take me through the unit here.
Well, I'm just at the beginning stages of doing that.
Let's go to rock and roll, and I'm going to show up at the rock and roll segment, and I'm going to be listening to rock and roll.
Jimmy Hendrix.
Definitely.
And then how am I going to be assessed?
We would hope you would show up throughout at your Scott.
Well, I've had a few ideas on how to do that. As I said, I haven't, I haven't sat down and completely planned this yet. I'll, I'll be spending about a month doing that this summer.
You envision a lot of writing in this?
But I do envision there being a few group projects, research projects, and also at least one large research project with a paper involved on a particular person.
But there will be no performing of them, this is all, no one's going to be, but you get, they'll be asked to bring in some instruments, but not performing.
Well, there will be in-class performing, but not a concert.
So they'll only be performing within themselves.
Within themselves, yes. And they won't be asked to do it on their own, and if they feel uncomfortable, they won't have to do that, and they'll have many opportunities to shine.
So the testing of this will be just the normal?
Normal, it's a paper.
It's a paper, multiple choice in papers.
Yes.
Would you envision bringing others in, maybe someone who was expert in one or two of these instruments?
Oh, yes, definitely.
To kind of demonstrate and relate, well, how does that apply to?
For this area and question and answer type.
Music appreciation in general, you know, what's to be appreciated, you know?
Exactly.
Nice admission.
I like it, I think it's great.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Amy, this is your third year, second year?
This will be my second year here this coming year, and then it'll be my sixth year in the future.
Yes, and your second year in Hazlet, mm, she's just doing a wonderful job. Outstanding.
I hear a very good response from my colleagues.
And it will, Sharon, sometimes you'll walk down the hall and you'll hear some beautiful singing, and it's Amy.
Thank you. I've really enjoyed working here, it's a wonderful place to be.
Thank you.
Bye, turn.
Based on weight. Yep, I knew it, based on weight.
I'm sorry?
Has it been more important?
It is really exciting. I don't have much of a voice, so please bear with me. We have two new classes at the high school that we'd like to talk about tonight, but also two new textbooks, and so there's kind of a sequence to it. I'm going to begin with a new textbook that we'd like to, to propose for our eighth grade pre-algebra class. We currently have what we call fundamental algebra at the middle school at eighth grade. We have a fundamental class and an algebra class, and currently, well, before this year anyways, we've had the same book, the same textbook, and what we did is, it's a slower-paced algebra out of the same textbook. And we've done this for a couple of years and found it to be semi-successful, and we started really spending time this year looking at an alternative way to, to present it, and we decided to go with a new textbook, and the idea was kind of a slower pace with basic concepts, really kind of building the foundation for students, so that when they go to the high school, they could make other choices in math, either going into the regular math program of Algebra I and they continue with Geometry and Algebra II, or going into our new courses that I'm going to explain to you in a minute. With this, Passports to Algebra and Geometry, it's a new textbook that we've picked for this class, we're going to call it Pre-Algebra. It, it really kind of flows into the Chicago Project, it's not by, it's not a Chicago series book, but it has the similar characteristics of the Chicago Project, the reading, the application, the application to everyday living kinds of problems like the Chicago Mall. So a student who is in Pre-Algebra in the middle school could easily move into the algebra at the high school if that's the direction they choose to take. So that was our suggestion for our eighth grade Pre-Algebra class.
So that was our suggestion for our eighth grade Pre-Algebra class. I'll just pass it to the line. The two classes that we have, um, have proposed at the high school are, um, are conceptual algebra and conceptual geometry. Right now, a student who's in middle school and is in fundamental algebra has basically two choices when they go to the high school. They could go into what we call B.C. algebra. And the idea of that was to complete the algebra book. It would take them two years to do the algebra book. They do half of it in eighth grade and the other half would be in ninth grade. The fundamental algebra was the eighth grade component, the B.C. algebra was the ninth grade component. So it's a slower paced algebra. Well, they could still do that. They would take the Pre-Algebra in the middle school and then they would go into conceptual algebra, which will be the slower paced algebra for them in the high school, out of the Chicago Math Project book. Slower paced, more activity based, more hands-on. And then following that will be the conceptual geometry. And that again is the same idea, a slower pace, more hands-on, lab activities, proofs, but not as proof driven as what our normal geometry book would be. The idea for these two classes, Al- conceptual algebra and conceptual geometry, is for the math student, because you need two credits in high school to graduate, for the math student who is either having difficulty or is half difficulty in math, or is not necessarily math-bound in their future. Maybe they're more into art or music and math is not their key area, but they still need to complete two credits in math. It gives them a pretty good solid foundation in algebra and geometry. The textbook for the conceptual algebra will be the same Chicago Algebra book that we have. The textbook for the conceptual geometry will be this one, or this is a recommendation that we have. And so I'll pass this around as well. The other book, the other new book, is the new calculus book. And, um, we currently have a calculus class at the high school. This book is just an updated version. We, um, we had the old book for six years. They've changed the A.P. calculus test two times in the last five years. So this is just, we have to keep up with the A.P. test. And, um, we found that this book seemed to meet those needs best. So that was a recommendation of our calculus teacher.
How many books did you have to choose from? I mean, when you were looking at, well, either, either these two. I mean, was there a wide selection or was it fairly narrow?
We had, I was personally involved in the, um, in the Pre-Algebra book and we looked at over ten different textbooks. And that was, those are the ones that were sent to us. There's many more out there, but we had to, had to begin to narrow. So we started looking, you know, when we looked at catalogs, there were key things that we were looking for. And so when, once we found those kinds, or if we talked to another school that had a book that they were pretty happy with, we then asked to see those books. So we looked at those as well.
Um, I, a couple of questions. Just to make sure I understand, the, um, conceptual geometry, that's a, that would be a sophomore level class, correct? I mean,
Yes.
I mean, there's an expected order that you complete your
Yes.
algebra series before you go on to, to the other.
Right.
Um, and I'm wondering, uh, you know, given where we are these days, if these, uh, bookmakers or sellers or whatever offer, uh, computer support, are, are any of these problems, or are there any lab type things that would be available that allow them to use the computers to, um, either supplement or help them with some of these kinds of problems?
Yeah, that would be a big component of the geometry. They've already talked about integrating technology in with that. So that's a part of the package that you purchase.
So they actually supply some type of software or problems that they use?
Right, and there are, in the book, there are labs as part of technology pieces, yep, in that one. I'm not sure where they are exactly, but Kevin Toby is the, is, will be the conceptual geometry teacher. He's pretty excited about the opportunity to integrate the technology in with, with that text and said that, um, the supplemental material that comes with that provides for that.
And did you have an opportunity to evaluate any of that software? Uh, because some of the times it's just nothing but a series of problems, you know, push the button, add the keys.
Right.
And other times it's more related, as some of these problems are, to, uh, actual experiences or trying to relate the math to, uh, practical, practical events.
I did that personally. I know that Kevin, Kevin spent a lot of time on the conceptual geometry and that was one of the things he was looking for when he was evaluating textbooks. I don't know if he personally got to go through the technology that they offered, but he was pretty pleased with what they had available.
Was this common from other textbooks? I mean, or was this group the only one to offer it? How, how is that happening in the marketplace now? Is that fairly common for?
Technology is a big component. I know when we got our, our Pre-Algebra book, there is a technology. We had a couple of the textbooks, they sent the CDs with them as part of the package, as part of the teacher package. So that's become a big part of the sell of the whole program.
Thanks. Questions?
The, um, the switch, I guess you would say effectively back to what we were doing a number of years ago with the eighth grade having a fundamental, I guess, a math program preparatory for high school algebra in the freshman year, which is what I think we were at three or four years ago. I think that's basically where we were at. Um, the kids that are then going into algebra and then on into geometry, uh, in the high school, I assume that some of those kids would be going on to college, et cetera.
Absolutely.
Would it make a difference the way that, um, the math is titled in the high school? I guess the, the, I forget the word you use in front of both algebra and geometry.
Conceptual.
Conceptual. Uh, does it matter to colleges that we're doing that rather than just grade algebra or straight geometry?
The students that are gonna be taking the conceptual algebra and geometry are probably not college bound in the math area. So i- if you are in a college prep, you probably are gonna be in the regular math curriculum that we have. So you're probably gonna be taking the Pre-Algebra. We have actually had fundamental algebra at the middle school. The very first year we switched to the Chicago Math, we found that not all eighth grade students were ready for the fast pace
Right.
of that algebra. So we switched to fundamental right away. And we've made varying changes each year and finally figured out what we felt this program would be better for our students. So i- a student leaving the middle school, having completed the Pre-Algebra, could go into the regular paced algebra and then continue with Geometry, Algebra Two, FST. Or they could go, if they're still struggling or not necessarily math-focused, they could go into the conceptual algebra or the, and conceptual geometry.
How does conceptual physics fit into that then?
Who would take that? The same people taking conceptual or not necessarily?
Not necessarily, not necessarily.
So you don't have a conceptual track and a regular track?
Absolutely not.
Okay. And how does that get communicated? Because I can see that that might be a misconception.
Well, we tried when we, when we presented, when we presented the courses to the
Conceptual or the conceptual?
eighth graders going into ninth grade. We tried to explain what the different classes are and there are also recommendations made by the teachers. So each of the students is given a recommendation of the place that they, that the teacher feels that they would be most successful. And it's a combination of the student and the teacher in a discussion that will decide where the place is.
Okay, because now my, in my case, my son was in the regular, he took FST and all that and then went to conceptual physics, which I don't, I don't really know where that came from, why he ended up in conceptual rather than, except it was his own choice at that point.
Right.
So, uh, you know, what does that mean? And going back to Ron's question, what does a college think of that? That a, a student took conceptual rather than the regular?
Well, I can, I can speak as a parent. My daughter took conceptual physics and her reasonings for taking that is she wasn't, math wasn't her favorite.
Right.
And conceptual physics was less math oriented than science. She loves the sciences, wasn't so crazy about the math. And so conceptual physics, because it was much more hands-on and not as much math, it was a better fit for her. And it had no problem in the transfer to college.
Well, and that's what I thought, that's what I thought as a parent all along, until now you're throwing conceptual algebra and geometry.
I know, and you know, we had to kind of come up with a name
Yeah.
when we were throwing around, you know, it needed to be different than algebra. It couldn't be Algebra One or Algebra Two, we already had that. Pre-Algebra didn't really fit with what we wanted to do. So, you know, it was kind of, we were sitting in a meeting and throwing, basic algebra, basic geometry didn't work. Conceptual sounded better. That's, that's basically why we have those names. It really didn't, we didn't think about it until, so we got conceptual physics, is that the same?
Well, I, I just wonder
I hear you.
if it won't be perceived that way. That's just, I just throw that out.
We just need to really make sure we do a good job in communicating that to our students.
Let, let me understand, maybe I, because I missed a couple of comments, but if I, if I take the, the Pre-Algebra in eighth grade and then I go on to high school, there's conceptual geometry. Is there, and which algebra courses there?
Conceptual algebra.
Conceptual algebra. Okay, so if, and if I'm not, let's just say I'm not going to college. Why? I wanna hire in at the General Motors plant, or I wanna go down to LCC and take advanced auto, uh, automotive mechanics. Are these courses preparing me to do that without taking the straight line, you know, Algebra One, Algebra Two, or?
These are still algebra concepts, still geometry concepts. Slower paced, hoping to be able to give them a better foundation base of understanding of what's going on so they can make applications and apply what they're learning. So for a student that doesn't necessarily, can't, can't go at the regular pace of what we have been teaching, our algebra and geometry, it's a slower paced, similar concepts, obviously not as in-depth as you would if you took the regular algebra, but still with the same basic foundations. Does that answer?
Well, yeah, it's an answer, but what, you know, if I, if I wanted to leave high schoo-, when I complete my high school, I'm gonna go to General Motors and go to work. And I know that they're gonna, they're, they're testing their, their new pe-, the new hires and they're testing them in, in these kinds of skills. Will I have the skills? Will I, i- if I take these courses, will I have enough good grounding in algebra and geometry to be able to meet their needs?
We hope so. I can't, I mean,
We are asked.
Right, right.
Really?
We are gonna be, obviously be evaluating this the next several years as we go through this to make sure that we can do those things for our students. But we've looked at these courses as an opportunity for those students who right now don't have very, very many successes in math and try and give them opportunities to either become more successful or help them to be able to meet the requirements that they need to be able to graduate from high school in math.
Isn't this an alternative for kids that aren't, you know, that aren't experiencing a lot of success and without this kind of intervention, kids really have no choice other than to drop out because they can't compete in the
Well, we don't want them to drop out.
Exactly.
We want them to have the skills that they need in order to, you know, to be able to, to be successful.
It's a slower paced acquisition of those skills.
Right.
That's fine.
But I mean, these, these classes are not designed for the student to continue on in math. These are the ones
Exactly.
These are the, these are the ones that are, we're trying to get math credits that they have to have to graduate. And rather than frustrate them with the faster paced one for the college class, it's a class that is designed to teach some skills, you know, slower paced, as you said,
Exactly.
but yet not take, they're not moving on to Algebra Two
Exactly.
and calculus and that from these classes. Is that correct?
Exactly.
So I think that's what we're trying to get at.
But still have enough.
But still say, you still take algebra.
Right, have enough.
Algebra as, as algebra, no matter how you kind of, when you start doing the
Have enough skills to be able to operate outside of high school.
Exactly.
Right.
That's those employment tests.
Well, employment, I mean, there's kids that come out, they're going out to use a calculator.
Say that. Okay. Yeah, just one, I noticed in the one textbook that it did have a CD in it. Do they get that? I mean, is that something you have to replace every year? How, how does that work? Or is that something the teacher would control?
The one that's in the geometry book?
Well, I know it's on the couch.
Calculus book.
In the professors' book too. You know, I'm not exactly sure how they're going to do that. One of the thoughts is that it's checked out just like the textbook is checked out or that you have, you know, like a folder that keeps your CD in it. You know, so if the student doesn't take it with them.
Okay, well, it'll be an interesting problem to solve.
Would, would, would that be used primarily in school or would that be used?
I don't know.
Haven't gotten there yet.
Haven't gotten there yet.
I, if it was in school, you could put it on a server and they could all, but if they needed to take it home and you said it'd be an interesting challenge to see how they get it.
Get it back.
They get it back. Sort of like chainsaw.
Thanks, Gail.
Good evening.
Hi.
I was talking with Amy Fenton over there and we come up to the decision that we are going to rename her class to conceptual music.
You know, that's exactly what I was thinking.
And tonight we're gonna prove conceptual hockey.
We're gonna follow that.
What an interesting concept.
Yeah.
I'm here to pop up, keep phones ready, my cam, so you know where to pop up.
While you're coming back up, Baldi, congratulations to the middle school and your meet scores.
Oh, thank you.
Excellent.
See, the staff worked pretty hard.
Yep, I'm sure they did.
Students, uh, just saying. Our staff has really made a commitment to, um, improving the meet scores.
There's lots of them.
Students get ready and we're really trying to apply our objective to that as well. Um, we're looking at two textbooks, both at the high school level. Uh, one is in the A.P. Biology area and, um, the other one is at Meridian High School. Believe it or not, the one at Meridian High School is conceptual physical science. And then we'll, I'll talk a little bit about the careers class too. But I've got Jason Potter here who can speak a little bit, uh, more to the advanced placement biology textbook.
Um, some, I, I know some of you have had students who've been in AP Biology class in the past. You may have noticed that, uh, they've developed, they've developed a list to one side with the size of the textbook, weight. I don't know, somewhere around six or seven pounds. And, uh, um, the book that we've currently been using, uh, is about, uh, six or seven years old, ten years old actually for about half of the copies that we have. And the other ones are, are also quite old. And as you know, things are, are changing very rapidly today. If you don't, uh, if you didn't listen to the news, they announced the, uh, near completion of the Human Genome Project way ahead of schedule. And it has a lot of, uh, potential, potential, uh, effects on our life, on students' life. And, uh, uh, the textbook that we're using, of course, came out at a time when that wasn't, uh, really too much in the works. I mean, they were hoping to do it, but, uh, uh, the plan was to complete it somewhere two thousand five, two thousand six, two thousand seven. Things have gone a lot faster than, than we expected them to. Uh, one thing that I've, uh, I've always used, uh, tried to use the textbook that MSU does in their introductory, uh, biology classes, their freshman biology classes. Uh, and, uh, to an extent, those worked okay. Uh, the problem is that, that, like many textbooks, um, these books are chosen by professors, uh, sold to students. And in order to have the maximum, uh, market that they can possibly have, they have to make sure that every piece of information in it, uh, is there that any particular professor anywhere in the country may possibly want to teach from. And the result is that the books have gone up to twelve hundred pages or more. And like, there's no, no way that we can cover that amount of material. Uh, and so I've always had to do a lot of selection, you know, selecting this section of the book or selecting that section of the book and so on. And I've been on the lookout for a number of years for, uh, a book that would deal with the major concepts. And now we're getting into conceptual A.P. Biology now. But, uh, something that would deal with the, with the, the basic information uh, and deal with it in a, in a timely fashion, but, but not be so overwhelming with, with, uh, material that, uh, the students really don't have to know to do, uh, to do what they have to do in the, in the A.P. course and to have success in future, uh, college classes. Um, and so I happened to, um, become familiar with this book. I gave you, uh, a few pages from it, uh, preface and so on. This is, uh, Biology, this is the eighth edition by Ralph Starr and Taggart. Uh, some of you may know Ralph Taggart, who's a, uh, a professor from Mason. And he's been on the IS, uh, the Intermediate School District, uh, School Board and I think on the Mason And he's been on the IS, the intermediate school district, the school board and I think on the Mason school board also. So this is in, in its eighth edition. It, this is, as you see, about half as big as the, as the textbook that I've been using. But in going through it, I, I've become convinced that it has everything that they would need to do extremely well on the AP exam. It's very well illustrated. It, it also comes with a CD-ROM, each, each copy of the book has a CD-ROM. It also comes with a year's subscription for the student to InfoTrack, which is one of the main internet sources of, of information. And it has a very close integration with the information from the internet. So this is the book that I'm proposing. I think that, that if we're going to continue offering an AP course and if you want a person who has not taught a college level course before to, to maybe take over teaching this at some time in the future, you might want it to, you might want something that's a little bit more manageable than, than the book that we've been using. So those are, those are my reasons behind it. I think it's an excellent book, covers the main topics very well and is very up to date. This is nineteen ninety-eight. If a new edition comes out between now and when I order the books, you know, that we would get that. But this has information about the Human Genome Project, it has information about Dolly cloning of the sheep in, in Scotland. So it's, it's quite, quite up to date. Any questions?
Jason, they've, inside the books now, we've gotten the CD-ROM. I'm wondering, and this is really nothing to do with the book, but just a curiosity if you've seen it. I mean, what would be more up to date than that would be to actually establish a website that would be synchronized with that book so that it really could be kept up to date?
They, they do have a website. In fact, I used materials from their website this last, the last time I taught the AP course.
Oh, great.
It, you don't actually have to adapt the book in order to use a lot of the website materials. It's very good. The CD-ROM has things, more things like simulation programs or things of that sort, you know, that would, might be useful for the student at home to, to work on. And I would check it out along with the textbook, suggest that they not carry it around, they just keep it at home if they have a computer. Otherwise, I could hold on to it for them if they, if they wanted to. If something should happen to it, we have the capability of making replacement copies of, of the CD-ROM. So. And then, and it doesn't cost much to make a, a new CD-ROM. I don't think there'd be any copyright problems as long as you were just replacing a, a damaged one.
You don't think they'd be hot on the internet?
Pardon?
I never.
No, I don't thi- no, I don't think that they would be, you know, you know, maybe, maybe for a few students, but not, not a lot.
Jeff?
I don't know if we use computers in the lab, if that'd be a practical thing to put into the lab, the computer lab for them, for those, particularly if they don't have computers at home.
There, there might be, yeah, it certainly, yeah, the lab could have it as far as that goes. And I think probably, I don't know, I'd have to, I'd have to deal with the, with the publishers about that, whether, you know, whether that would be okay. But they could certainly use it in, in the lab, you know, in the school.
Given the, the fast pace of change in the sciences especially, how, how do you envision the change in the textbooks? I mean, this textbook is about ninety-eight and we're in two thousand one four, we're able to get it out and about. And I think you said the current one is nearly ten years old. I can't see us waiting another ten years before we replace our biology text.
Probably not, no. I don't know, it's a problem that, especially with biology, probably more than with mathematics or some other, other areas.
Right.
The, the main concepts of biology haven't changed since I, you know, studied biology in college. And it, it's just that there's a lot of additional, you know, applications and problems and things of that sort that you have to deal with. So I guess if you were sufficiently, you know, grounded in biology, you could probably teach AP Biology with, with a ten year old book, you know, and do okay.
I guess I was wondering about the, the essential need of the text. Like you say, if the basic concepts are there and they're relatively universal, it's the application that keeps changing. What's new and how, how has the application of those fundamentals to the world around that, that's changed? And it seems like a lot of that could come from sources other than textbooks.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of it does. That's why, that's why they have their own website and that's why they have other sources that they recommend that, that you access also.
So from.
I, I can't see, I wouldn't wanna have to teach with a ten year old book.
Yeah.
I mean, even, even if I could. I'd like it to be as, as up to date as possible. I think it turns the kids off if they, if they, you know, like some of the books that we used to have, you know, Sunday man will walk on the moon, like, you know. And we still had them, several years after that it happened.
Been there, been there, done that, yeah. I, I guess I was thinking, where, when you're looking from a curriculum committee perspective at media other than just textbooks? And if that's becoming an, an item, both from an expense side as well as from a planning and implementation side for consideration.
I'm not sure I understand what you're.
Well, I, you know, we see the texts coming with CDs. I mean, how far away from seeing CDs coming without text or with minimal text to accompany them? As something that we'd have to consider as, as an option for delivering a curriculum.
Yeah. I don't see, I guess I don't know quite how to respond.
And I don't, I, it's rhetorical, I just, I, I see it as a, as something that's gotta be faced somewhere through all the technology.
I, at this point, I, I don't, you know, I can find a lot of information on the internet, students can too. But I think a textbook fulfills a, you know, a very important function of helping you to organize, you know, what's, what you're finding other places.
Anything else?
Thank you, Jason.
Jennifer, I appreciate you asking Jason that question instead of me. No, actually I'd like to respond a little bit to that as well. I know that at the middle school level, we've been reviewing and revising, taking a close look at our curriculum and science issue as well. And we really have not, we have decided at this point not to ask for a new textbook. For a couple of reasons. One is that both the Science Teachers Association and then Project Two Thousand Sixty-One has had a, quite an extensive exploration of the text. And they don't feel there's one out that's really suited to, to a good municipal program. And secondly, just the kinds of things that you were saying, the curriculum obviously is more than the textbook. The textbook is a resource, there are different ways to do that. And I think as, as we go on in time, we'll see more and more of that. I do think however, that as we get farther up into the grades, into the high school, it becomes a little bit more fundamental, of course, especially when you're talking about college prep and especially advanced placement courses, because you're talking about the same kinds of courses that the students will, will see in college and those are really text driven. So it's important that we call it those. The other text is at the Meridian High School. They are in really pretty dire need of a physical science textbook. The one that they've selected and actually gone through the district science curriculum study committee, this conceptual physical science book. I know that the high school has looked at this very closely as well. We have been looking at the, at introductory physical science, our current IPS program right now. It has some pros and cons, it's, it's been a very good foundation for students into the high school. It really prepares them well for some fundamental kinds of things for science. But some students do struggle with the IPS as well, and the conceptual, conceptual physical science, again, is not as math based. It provides a, a good way for students to get the concepts in a different manner. So we even looked at maybe having that, you know, at the high school or ninth grade, a half year of IPS and a half year of conceptual physical science and various other kinds of ideas, but really could never settle on anything this year. So we're still in the process of reviewing that into next year. But, but Meridian High School does feel that that textbook would serve them well and it would offer the kinds of things that they need. Their text currently is a nineteen eighty-two text. That's science. Any questions?
Questions, comments? Jeff?
Well, on the physical science at Meridian High School, is that substantially different than what we're doing at the?
Well, again, concepts are gonna be similar or the same, but I think the approach will be different. The IPS is very, very analytical based, it's very based, Jason, you can help me too, cause I know you've talked that before. It's somewhat self-directed by the students. All of the, the teacher has to be an excellent facilitator and coach for the student to help them with, with the IPS. The text doesn't do much with that at all.
Okay.
The student literally has to learn by experience and by deduction and by those kinds of things. And they also have to be very good at lab techniques and lab write-ups and, and the fundamentals of those kinds of, kinds of areas, which is a good basis for science in general. This will head a little bit different direction.
Okay, more maybe the, or the traditional process that we sometimes have in the sciences.
As I see it, it has, it tracks very well with the meet program in terms of the main concepts that it covers.
Good point, good point.
That's why we looked at.
Anything else? Thank you, Bobby.
Okay, I just, I need to talk about the careers class.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we've got one more to go.
Oh, maybe before you do that, if you, we, we do have some action items here. And by our board policy, we are required by the Board of Education to bring both new courses to the board for review as well as new textbooks. Our budget, our trigger for bidding are not exceeded here. These requests are basically single source type textbooks. So again, in the action items, we're asking for your approval of both the new courses and new textbooks.
Of which the careers I'm talking about will be part of that.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. All right.
I don't wanna get into that last.
Follow Jeff, you're cutting me off then.
What's that? Number fourteen, that's right.
As far as the careers class goes, as you know, that we are, have been and continue are looking for ways to, to implement and include career preparation, career education with our students. I know the high school will, will be looking at that very closely as well and we work with the ISD quite a bit with that. Students need academic knowledge and skills, but they also need technical knowledge and skills as well as work behavior knowledge and skills. And those are the things that we try to look, look at as we present careers to our students at the middle school. Our goals will, will be to link education and, and career planning and a career plan focus for our students. And also to have greater relevance between school and future goals, and how school relates to that now it's important. So we will be offering at the sixth grade level, careers opportunity for students. It's, it's in our rotation, some, some of it is very, again, schedule oriented, structure of our schedule. So every student isn't going to be exposed to, be able to be exposed to careers, but most of them will be to some degree or level from sixth, seventh grade. At the sixth grade level, they will be as part of the band, phys ed rotation every other day situation. At the seventh grade level, it will be one of our exploratories. It is a required exploratory for seventh graders. However, if they do take band and choir, then they will not be proud of being that, have the opportunity of being exposed to the careers class. At eighth grade, it's the same thing, it's a required exploratory for careers starting next year. But again, if they take band and choir, they will be exposed to that. And it's a nine week course. The kinds of things that you'll see there will be continued use of the ACT explore and plan. It's interest inventory as well, some abilities inventory, that's gonna be eighth grade level. Use of MOIS, the Missional Occupational Information System, individual career plans and then, you know, awareness and exploration of careers as well. So those are the kinds of, kinds of things that we're in the process of developing, we don't have it all completely set yet even, but we're working on it.
So they get it in the sixth grade for sure, is that right?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
At the sixth grade level, those actually non-band students will get exposed to that.
Where, what year did you say they do?
Well, at the seventh grade level, again, it, it's available to all students except those that are in both band and choir. And just, just for a point of information, that's approximately twenty-five students in each grade. Out of the two hundred directly that we have, two hundred, two hundred and forty-five. So again, it's part of the, it's part of our, the structure that we have set up. Unfortunately, we don't have enough hours a day or personnel necessary to offer everything that you'd like to offer to everybody. So if a, if a student chooses to be in choir and chooses to be in band, then they have certain, there are other things, it's in the, at the expense of something else.
So they don't get, if, I mean, both musical programs, then there's, then I don't get any career.
That's correct, you don't get any exploratory experience at all.
No, I don't get anyone but middle school. I don't get anything until I get to high school.
Exactly.
And that's as much as twelve and a half percent? You said twenty-five out of two hundred?
About twenty-five students.
Well, that's an eight, that's twelve and a half percent of the students will not get access. I mean, they have access, but because they're in this music track.
Well, they choose, they've chosen it though.
Well, I know, but I'm just wondering if some point in time comes when we say, no, you really gotta take some of those. And at the expense.
You're trying to say that to a musical kid, or?
Well, we gotta.
They can be street musicians in New Orleans.
Or, or find a way, or find, or for us to find a way that they absolutely do get it. Get some exposure before they get to high school.
So you're convinced that they have classes that are important to them?
Well, I'm convinced that it's, it's time to start thinking about it in the middle school, before they get to high school.
I, I agree. I, I think that the, the exploration of all these alternatives and what's out there is really important at the early age to have some sense of it. I guess I'm a little concerned that there's no opportunity. It's not like, oh, they had three chances and missed. They choose music, somehow they don't get to find out about other careers.
Yeah, and that's part of the problem.
Well, could I ask just a couple of questions, just from your own experience regarding some of the assessments that you mentioned there? The MOIS, M-O-I-S, and I know we've had those for a few years. Has it been your experience as, as the principal that those are well received and by the students? And there is some value to that that, that is derived from it? Cause I, I've heard some of the contrary, that it's kind of, kind of an exercise in silliness.
Well, you know, you have to remember, we, it's middle school students.
Right, I understand. Considering the source, considering the source of all of this. Now I'm asking somebody that's seen, gone through the routine with, with several hundreds of these.
Exactly, exactly. And you know, what, at what age is too soon and what ages are too late? And at least we are exposing them and giving them the opportunity to look at their interests, what's out there. Of course, everybody wants to be an athlete or, or in, you know, in the back, one of the Backstreet Boys, one of those two things. But, you know, seriously, at least they get a feel for, you know, what's ahead, what's out there, what are some of the skills? And, and probably one of the other areas that I know that as we talk with grads and as we talk with employers is employability skills area as well. That as we're hiring, as we're hiring younger and younger workers, they need to have those employability skills and the responsibility of being.
How do those tests give them the skills?
Well, I'm not saying necessarily does, but that's part of the program as well. We talk about those kind of issues in the, in the teaching process as well. But yeah, you know, how seriously do you take it? And then what do you do with that later on? But, but you know, there are students too that, that develop an interest early on and really go with it and.
So if it says I'm gonna be a doctor in the eighth grade because I answered this test such and such, it would be your assessment that there is a percentage that actually say, gee, I guess I could become a doctor?
It wouldn't say.
I say they will, but I said.
It wouldn't say a doctor, it would probably say the health field.
And then it, then it would lay out, if you're gonna, if you're gonna choose that path, here's the likely curriculum and courses you should take in high school. I mean, if you're gonna, you know, you should limit, you can't play both in band and choir because you're gonna have to take more science. And it'll give you an idea of what you might. And it'll give you an idea of what you might plan on for college and the type of college you might wanna go to, so you can start thinking about that. And if it doesn't fit, you can always change, but it gives them some idea that they get to a senior and then they wanna go to, go to, into college and they don't have the right match, so they have to start all over again or something like that.
My question is, is do they actually take, go through that thinking process? Or is it just an exercise in, hey, it says I ought to be a?
Who's gonna teach the class?
One of our former counselors, Bill Sack, right now is the one that's teaching. I think, you know, I, I think they do, they do take it. I mean, the, the explore is more, it's ACT, but it's done by ACT, and I think it's a pretty valid instrument, and I think, I think the vast majority of our students take it seriously at the moment for the time. How it, you know, how it works out down the road to another school. And the MOIS, which is Michigan Occupational Information System, is a great way, computer-wise now, to look up information and try to match up your interest areas with different occupational areas and find out more about them. So, it's a good way to, you know, just to kinda keep, you know, get in touch with them.
To an hour and a half, they did Cooter preference. They took the pen.
Speaking of Cooter.
And, you know, I, I look back on those experiences and I'm wondering, what in the world were we doing back then? I mean, maybe, I'm a product of the sixties and whatever, but nevertheless, I hope that we've advanced beyond it. But it doesn't, that's what I'm hearing and what I think of these types of tests, that they're, the names are changing, but.
Right.
They're, they're really not changing a great deal, and I'm.
I think one way to bridge that a little bit is communication with parents as well. That if, you know, I have yet to see any of those, I've heard tidbits from my kids of, you know, well, I took this and it says that, but I have yet to see the actual document itself and, and how it turned out. And I, you know, it'd be really helpful for parents to see where their kids specifically, you know, where they shine and where they don't, and what that mean, what that computes to in terms of classwork. You know, if your kid is hell-bent to take music, to take choir and band, but if I had a tool where I could say, well, wait a minute, you know, according to these interest surveys you've taken three different times that, you know, I, I haven't seen, but according to these, you know, maybe you better rethink that. And it just gives you a better tool as a parent to.
But all my buddies are taking choir and band.
Well, and they do have, they do have a real interesting choir band at that point in their lives. Because like Valdi says, they, they might be the next, you know, teen band or something. And so it's hard to, to have, if you don't have any leverage to say, you know, you better maybe think about taking that instead or whatever. It just, I think it would help, especially at the middle school level, because they're not gonna come home and lay it all out to their parents.
Down the road too, the hope is that the whole career prep, you know, approach will be more integrated to all classes. That's been a design for years, but I think even more so now with all the technology out there and the kinds of skills that employers are looking for, and really the mere, the statistics even with how college students do, you know, whether, you know, whether they complete college and when they do, where are they going, where are the jobs? There are so many jobs now, if they're not in college, they're excellent jobs. That's something that we all have to serious about in terms of the career.
Is that something with the team approach that we have in the middle school that we can work at? I mean, I'd feel more comfortable with that, knowing that there's gonna be twelve, thirteen percent of them aren't gonna make the, make the exposure. I, I, I agree, they don't, they aren't terribly open about it, but I can remember when Justin went through there, we at least had some discussions about, oh yeah, I heard about this career, and, and we talked a little bit about it. I mean, none of it ever came to pass, but they thought about it. It was something they had to think about.
Actually, since you brought that up, some of those, some of the activities for that class will be all through teams. Since, since it's an exploratory, you only have it for nine weeks at a time. Sometimes you can't wait. For instance, an interest survey, you can't wait every nine weeks to take one and then use it effectively. So, it'll probably be given through, through the teams, what we call seven-hour, and it'll be incorporated with that. So, I'm glad you mentioned that, because there won't be a total lack of any career exposure at all. There'll be some. Just won't be as intense as the class.
Okay.
Well, you know, I know, you know, MOIS is, I was at the career development meetings this last week, and the MOIS people were there as well as Cooters. And they are, they're, Cooters is a, but they're getting, they're looking at merging, backing up. I mean, MOIS is really trying to back itself up. There's another new, the NOEXs and SOEXs have a really neat thing that supplements all that, and I'll share it with my, Dallas is gonna share it with you, but called The Real Game, and it does the employability things by taking, using simulation in the, they actually go in the workplace and see people actually using the skills, which is, the Cooters and everything is, and MOIS is still very static and script-oriented, which is kinda not appealing, though they say behind it, they're gonna put in video clips and things like that, and they should, but. So there's a big effort to upgrade these and get kids involved and thinking through that. But the big emphasis now has shifted to understanding the roles of skills and what they do. I mean, the whole thing is shifting to employability skills.
Valdi, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Valdi.
Okay, board reports. Finance and facilities?
We haven't met.
Haven't met, okay. Policy and personnel?
Did you guys leave the meeting on Monday or not?
This morning.
Yep, today's meeting.
Scott was there.
Scott, you didn't think?
For somebody.
Yes, well, not much to say here. We met regarding a personnel issue, I went out with Nancy Colfless, and momentarily she was there, and she gave us a document that I, I assumed we all have.
Yes.
We have it.
Yes, and so we just had a discussion of that, and that was really basically.
How was breakfast?
Early.
For a retired person, it's really.
If it is the middle of the morning, it's early, right?
A lot of life.
Okay, any items on the board? Okay, seeing none. We have action items. We have fourteen action items tonight.
Move we approve?
Second.
Moved and supported to approve all fourteen action items. What?
I wanted to pull one.
Which would you like to pull?
Jeez, move quickly.
Whatever this one is, D, on the supply.
D is seven. Custodial supplies?
Number seven, okay.
You're pulling custodial.
Well, yes.
All right, just hold on. Is anything else, Jeff, you want to pull?
No.
Number seven, okay. All right, let me read them off. Number one, approval of mess to June twelfth, twelfth, two thousand, regular and closed session board meeting. Two, out-of-state field group trip request for the band to go to Atlanta, Georgia. Three, recommendation to accept hockey as an interdisciplinary sport. Number four, approval of nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand final budget amendments. Number five, approval of the two thousand, two thousand and one budget. Number six, the board policy revision that we discussed at our last meeting. Number eight, recommendation to increase lunch prices. Number nine, the state aid belt, which was laying on our table tonight. You wanna pull that?
I, you, you receive, you've got an attachment there from our legal counsel that's in front of you, so I assume you had a chance to look at that.
That's standard every year, isn't it?
Is it the same as every year?
Yes, it's the same as every year.
No, nothing new.
Except the number's different.
Number ten, recommendation to approve the HEA Board of Education three-year labor agreement. Number eleven, approval to the additional courses of music appreciation, conceptual algebra, algebra, conceptual geometry classes at the high school. Number twelve, approval to purchase textbooks for conceptual geometry, calculus for Hasler High School, as well as the purchase of new textbooks for eighth grade pre-algebra. Number thirteen, approval to purchase textbooks for AP Biology at the high school and Physical Science at Meridian High School. And number fourteen, approval of the addition of a careers class at the middle school. Any discussion on any of those items? Yes, Ron?
One, I would like to make one point on number ten, the recommendation for the approval of the HEA Board of Education three-year labor agreement. I'm absolutely delighted that the parties could all get together this quickly and get this resolved, and I think it's, speaks very, very well for the relationship between the district and the employees, and I'd like to commend everybody involved. So, thank you very much.
Good comment. Any other discussion? Okay, been moved and supported to approve number one through six, eight, nine, and eleven through fourteen. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Actually, we approved ten too, I just.
Oh, did I, you meant ten, I'm sorry, and ten too, okay. Six O, Miss Levy absent with notes. Okay, number seven, Jeff?
I'm not gonna oppose, I just had a, I just wanna make a comment, I guess, on the bid process, where the low bid is more than ten percent differential, and I guess I didn't find the explanation for why we chose the next bidder very comforting in terms of justifying why we would pay ten percent more with no backup as to what the differential was.
I think there's an error on my part. The board did not get a, through, did I, did I give you a explanation from Mr. Joseph?
Yeah, there was an explanation, I just didn't find the explanation satisfying. No, I did, basically said, well, we're happy with the folks who've been doing it. If that's the case, why did we bid it? So, that's my comment.
Yeah, Dave, we're prepared to speak to that. I think Mr. Joseph did try to explain that there's some issues with products, that he believes are superior products, and you're maybe not comparing apples and apples.
Mr. Dave? I did ask Mike about this, and his response was that the different products that were bid would cause him to use potentially more products of the, of the lowest bid. So instead of diluting something, you know, five to one, he's got diluted two to one, and it costs him more. We did talk about in the future trying to put that into the calculation, so he felt he had to have more or less dilution, and it would cost, he'd have to buy more product to do the same amount of work, that potentially we would go ahead and incorporate that into some kind of an adjustment to their bid, so that we could then have apples to have.
And I tried to do so. I went through some of the calculations, trying to figure, well, what did he mean? And there were several where there were question marks without what was being questioned. But in fact, they bid specific quantities that would meet what we had asked for, so I couldn't see where was the problem, since they are basically bidding the same quantity that we had asked for them to bid. The dilution is probably a good explanation, I just didn't see.
Yeah, there's a difference in quality.
Okay.
And, and also, some of the, like, for instance, the disinfectants that some of them proposed didn't kill all germs and bacteria like the HIV, which is, is requirement as part of that. So, then he would have to use a different product, you know, or an additional product, two products to do the same thing.
So, next time around, we'll be more specific about what our expectations are.
Well, and also adjust for, when somebody doesn't, and we can say we want something or we want to, but they try to bid their own line of products, which they can then, you know, it's a no-name product, and then they can get the price down if it doesn't meet the specifications. And they don't necessarily tell you that it's part of it.
And, and I guess for my part, I didn't see that as being adequately explained in the letter. Just said, well, we like these guys better. I mean, that's how I read it, okay.
And there was more to it tonight, because I questioned it myself when I saw that as part of the agenda. He answered it to, to, to my satisfaction, but I think in the future, hopefully, we'll present it a little bit differently in a formal manner, so it'll be more strict for it for you to.
Thanks, very helpful. Recommended support.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported to approve our custodial supply bid for two thousand, two thousand and one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Six O. Okay, announcements. Our next meeting is July tenth. It'll be our organizational meeting.
Charlie, I will be asked.
Ron's gonna be gone. Anybody else gonna be gone? I know there's been others in the past. Nobody else will be here, good. Okay, yeah, we'll need the closed session meetings for.
Minutes.
Minute.
They're at the very last.
Okay, does anybody else have anything?
Move we close?
Support.
Moving supported to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.